The first part of the meeting today is a public hearing. Is to discuss the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty twenty twenty four. Of Seton City and the courts, Louisiana RS thirty nine thirteen oh one. At this time, if anybody has any discussion concerning the budget, they have to state their name and limit the discussion to three minutes. Do we have any discussion concerning the budget? If none, we will adjourn that hearing. And now we will go into our regular council meeting. I'll call the meeting. If y'all will stand in my place and pray. And I'll tell you. Please pray. Our Father in heaven do we hope we're thankful for this day. Father, we're thankful to be here to represent the good people's strength. Father, we're thankful for your blessing, mercy, your presence each and every day. Father, just talking to Jerry, Jerry has got a good report. She has some more treatments to do. We pray for her and we pray that your healing be done in their family, Father. And just keep them wrapped in your arms, Father. We know that your will will be done. Father, guide us now as our councilor, our mayor, Father, who represents the people here. Father, we take care of your business, your stewards, great stewards of your money and your time. These things we have blessed and they end. Okay, y'all, thanks for playing. Praise your name.
United States of America. And to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, the river can do as it desires.
Okay, at this point, I need to end the agenda. I have two items I need to add. One, our chief has an officer he needs to add. Secondly, I need to add Representative Dr. Wayne McMahon to our legislative update from the state. So I need a motion. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next item, considering the minutes from last year, remember meeting held on May the eighth twenty twenty three. Motion to approve the amendments.
I saw no minutes to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Consider the financial statement from May of twenty twenty three. Any motion to approve the financial statement? Second, okay, any discussion? All in favor? I don't, I don't mind. At this point, we're in a public comment section. This is where anybody can comment on any of the items which is allowed on the agenda. Again, they state their name, limited to discussion, three minutes. Do we have any public comment? Okay, this time, next item is all business. We have. Okay, I'm the new division. Like I said, Representative Dr. Wayne McMahon is here to update us as far as Spring Hill's party and some of the things that need to be legislated. So Mike, come on up. I got you, I got you, Pope.
It's pretty good to be in Spring Hill and not coming back for the year. Mayor, thank you for asking me to come today. I thought we'd probably leave it over the weekend and relate some of the stuff that happened through the session for our community in Northwest New York. Now, I know one thing, sessions can be more complicated when you've got more money than you have less money because everybody's going face of the pie. And that pie is very big and I won't get part of it. It was a little more of a challenge in some ways, but we were fortunate. We had two good capital outlet projects that were totally up against funding. They were probably something that earned us close to ten million dollars. We got funding in place for the waste park program that we've been trying to get done. Trade last time, yeah, plan. Last couple of years, we've got funding in place for the third phase of the water system. Is that a North Acre or?
Yes.
That's the last phase of the project standing around.
Yes.
We've got, we've got a second meeting, too. King One money, which will be roll after. Do that first and then the borrowing money, six D five. It's actually the number one project, pretty good sized project. The supplemental, the supplemental, why did we have this? It was the first time we really had any significant in the last four years that I've been in the legislature. And that's where some of the, an extra money or money that was not expected had been spent across the state. You know, there was, and I'm pretty conservative. I wanted to make sure before we spent all the money that we had above the budget. Budget before, I wanted to make sure we paid down on our debts. Our rainy day fund of the state and budget statement of the places in intersecting has been probably the last twenty five years. Look at the money in there. We paid some down, some debt down on teacher retirement, I believe, and also paid some inflation down, which will free up interest money that will come back. Most of those problems are paying for, have to pay seven and a quarter, seven and a half percent of interest on the, on the debt. Because those funds will pay out in twenty nine and stay on track where we are. We should be in good shape to do that. We actually come up with about five hundred million, just more or less than five hundred million dollars over budget than we were expecting this year. That seems like a lot, but next year is looking, it could be close to two billion. Part of that has come from, a large part of the amount of money you say, well, how did it get back in our budget? Did the federal balances down and they got spent on the cap? Add revenues up. And some of the federal borrowers still staying there to be used. But we're in a pretty good, pretty good position as a state. We're gonna lose the four, four, five cent tax in twenty twenty five. That's about four hundred million dollars deduction in our tax receipts if everything stayed where it was today. But, you know, it looks like we're gonna have an excess of money or over budget money that we'll be able to allocate over the next three to four years to make that, instead of the building, clear what everybody's been talking about in twenty five. Hopefully, it'll be up, maybe on a good runway, but we can put that back in place. And the good news is, one of the things that I've been hearing about since I got in the legislature and finished the law enforcement. We've got three hundred fifty thousand dollars in cash money to put to work. That's great. So hopefully, I think y'all have a brand that you started working on that should get close to that. Another thing that's, I've been, myself, this plan, I've been helping the fire department out with their leasing rent. We got fifty thousand dollars in cash money to work on through. Probably hopefully help with the, the insights of that people that we're saying with the rent that's been deteriorated, leaking causes. I think that's all, y'all owe me that bill. So that money, that money is in, will be coming to Spring Hill. I did earmark that before. And, you know, the the House, my side, well, sir, is a hundred and five of us. Now, all of us are in agreement on spending over the budget or breaking the account. But when you start realizing whose money you're spending is our money. And I want to just give you an example. Fire station would be one of them. You've got a leak, if your house is leaking, it is called deterioration in your house. Now, if you don't have any money in the bank to fix it, you might as well go get a blue car. But if you've got money in the bank, it would be boom, stop, miss, miss. We've got a lot of leaks in our state. But the key thing is, we've got to use this money, the excess money, for one time expenditures. We can't be creating new things, that affect and fix infrastructure, run, improve this. We've got to invest in early childhood education, really early childhood education, all the way to college education. We've got to invest in the whole spectrum there. You know, one of the good things that come out of, you know, COVID was a big setback to our students. It was hard to get these kids educated when they couldn't be in the classroom. But somehow, losing out of literacy grade, it went from like forty eight to thirty eight on a state basis coming out of COVID. That tells me we did, we did better. I don't know that some of the states may have been went backwards and we may not went that much forward. But we did better than a lot of the states when we got literacy grade of forty eight, thirty. So I think we're on a pretty good plane. And talking about education, we've, in this budget, there's a two thousand dollar A increase for our teachers, a thousand dollars for everybody that works with students. And that's not a great intention. That is in the form of stopping means it may not come back next year. I'm ninety nine percent sure it'll come back next year and it'll already be put in a form for permanent raise. But we know we've got an excess coming next year, but we don't know what the next year is going to look like when we get there. So that's, the governor asked for a three thousand dollar raise. Both sides of the House and the Senate agreed upon the two thousand dollar raise this year. Hopefully, we can make that permanent and maybe come back and raise the teachers again next year. For infrastructure, roads and bridges, we've got several projects going on across our parish town. I think there's gonna be some money, federal money that can help us. What we've got to do is designate those projects that are highest priority for our district. The next thing I need you guys to do, I don't think you have another capital outlet bunch of power running out. Somehow between them, open the first, we've got to be looking at what we need to pack next. That's right. The first time you fear, sometimes you can get in there, you discover that you've got to get in line. Be diplomatic, make sure that they don't beat you. I would like to see y'all have at least two projects. I would guess if you could hand them to the fire department. That we need the money there and for the, for the fire station. You know, I would have been looking for something to spend that, you know, four hundred thousand dollars on. That didn't come up again, now that was going to be available. Very quickly, you know exactly how much we'll spend. If I don't have a project when the money's available, somebody, Claywell Parish, or Low Parish, or Hill Parish would get it. You gotta have those projects in place when we have the opportunity to get funded. And there's, it's been a privilege serving on the last, this, my fifth year in the legislature. I was saying like, it's been a while. I look at my grandkids that are here with us this week. One was just born and he's just turned five, starting to play. But a lot of things have happened over the last five years. It's been a very eventful five years in the legislature, being in COVID and all the cases. There've been some good things that have come out of it. I think we're better prepared as a country in a lot of ways. COVID has been very bad from a devices standpoint. You know, all the media and the social media, the gendered different groups have, it seems like it's divided our country. When we're sitting around in the house and you don't have anything to do, everybody's, same way as they run Facebook or Twitter or one of those platforms and, you know, it has made us divided. You know, we, we've got a great country we live in and the way we can do better is all work together. We can't have this faction and that faction, everybody going to work in different ways. We're not going to all just agree completely. It would be a sad world if we all agreed all the time. At the same time, I think we may have a good place, maybe in replacing our little city. Look forward, I think this funding will help other water. We know the anchors where I live has been a follow-up of Chancin Water Waters today. But we are blessed in a lot of ways. We look at some of the other smaller communities, our size, we're in the state. Proud to say I was a governor this way. Y'all have any questions, I'll try to answer them. This year's election year for me, and I'm, y'all ready this weekend? Y'all, one more, one more, one more four-year term for sure. Y'all, let me get in, we're gonna have the governor's race, it looks like it's gonna be a lot of choices. Hopefully, pray that, y'all, guys, send what I feel, what I feel, that we can continue to work. I'm planning, I'm pretty
How, how, you know, flash pad? Is that gonna be covered in our Monday? I think that's for tomorrow.
The, I was, I put that money in mostly for the ballpark.
You know, we have a flag for the club, you know, flash pad behind the harbor gate.
That's, that's in the process. I don't know that I, actually, actually, I have a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not that far. I afford the hand, so I'm just a little bit, but I can't, I'm not ready. Myself, I should give a son, they don't find credit, we work together on that. I work most of the time, to be honest with you. I'm careful last night, I don't have some big mistakes, you know, place water plant, take, you have, what I think, my first priority, water system. North Acre is my second priority. I say I was sent to mail, we look in all my business that you cover, all my business. We like through, first money, cause of, of business that I serve. And do I, pretty good job. But look at it, I don't have those numbers, the rest of the business, I'll see, I think that, got a hundred thousand dollars. I was thoughtful, I mean, I have a lot of money, I think, that's, that's
That love needs to be in an argument, too, separate. I know, I do think it is selling, you're that's already, that money is just coming back to y'all in this city. Y'all, bring one thousand dollars, bring that off, that's what I'm saying.
That's right.
Anything else? Appreciate it, everybody. Yeah, I want to call the same way. All the, for a hill. Appreciate you coming and all the hard work, a lot of work down there, getting away from your family. But it's strong family value, we both are in touch, we're like, hey. But the deep, deep sewer, trick of plan that will keep the city in pain. Big family estate and something that you can do for your future. Replacement of the water line, steal away with the majority of groundwater issues that we've had. And our, our water is fine. But a state rated in C, not, not for waterfalls, because of the cause, factors like a large debt. And the acting terror actor of the state mandated a replacement of two thirds of the city's water. The money for the recreation park will go along with waiting for completion of that policy. It needs to be there. And of course, like he said, the fifty thousand dollars replaced by a department, definitely something to do. Again, I think, like, I want to say. I mean, these are positive things for Spring Hill. We need to be positive about our city and proud of it. I know I'm, and to be folks that run the city down on social media, only hurt themselves and everybody else too. We need to be positive about our city. We got
Can I say one more thing? On my part. It's in for paying, in fact, in the city, things change, well, western areas. We've got two water second projects that got funded last year. That was water, it did way, the south of, south of, go, go, water second project. They can handle five million dollars, they need to get their water association done. Where these people, not only to develop a clean, fresh water drain, but also be sustainable going forward. We did the same thing over here on the east part of Paris with the, the, state line in Chongqing, there's only three. That's an initiative the state had. The, we're able to get, I think, five projects back in the western parish during, during those times. We've got two good ones up here before. See, I knew they were hiding that big time.
Okay. Next item, is about the special orders and kind of the special orders, supplementing the operating budget revenues and expenditures from this year beginning July one twenty twenty two, beginning June thirty twenty twenty three. Any motion to amend adoption? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Next item, about the north, some kind of orders adopting operating budget revenues and expenditures from this year beginning July one twenty twenty three, and beginning June thirty twenty twenty four. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Amy, Amy, I like you, she has a main street manager of that.
Hi, everybody, I'm Amy, I'm the director of Main Street here in Spring Hill. Couple of things we did recently in the last month since our last meeting. We were able to build and create a successful partnership with the Main Street Initiative Nonprofit. We'll be suffering from the Spring Hill Main Street program. We're working on revitalizing the downtown together. Our first project was the Spring Hill Farmers Market Pavilion. We had a lot of great volunteers from the Northwestern community surrounding all of Spring Hill, South Arkansas, even a couple of Texas, Indiana. To improve the space, we held our first event the weekend before last and had about three hundred people. And the market vendors did, I think they said about thirty five hundred dollars in sales. That was a pretty good deal for a small town farmer's market. We had vendors come all the way from North Bow here, Shangaloo, calling all of our surrounding areas. And because of the success of that event, we're gonna do it at one time. But because this is the best of the event, we've been asked by shoppers and vendors alike to make it a recurring. So our next one will be in Independence Market and that will be July first, nine to one. So everybody shop there, thank you, the council for showing up and supporting your, your city. We have that going on. We've also just opened restoration grants. Louisiana Main Street is doing restoration grants and those are available to building owners in the Main Street District and business owners. So that will go from the Piggly, from the clock tower all the way down Main Street to Piggly Wiggly. And then the clock tower all the way down First Street to Piggly Wiggly, to just where Don's class is. Any business in that district is available to apply for these grants and it's a good opportunity because they're only available to Main Street districts. And that's a really blessing for poor. Do you guys know building owners or business owners? Please tell them to call me, apply, I've been trying to go business by business and meet everybody. And lots of big projects that we're working on right now that we've got that are awesome. I appreciate you guys, pass it over.
Thank you. Okay, next item, consider the election of Spring Hill Press and News Journal, Fisher Journal. Sit your spring hill, one, any motion to do that?
I make a motion to accept it, Spring Hill Press and Journal.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? I don't know. Next item, Patty Lee Brown Cooper and Karen Jesse Cooper will be present to show just called on the property located near fifteen Seventh Street Southwest. Should not be kissing. Patty Lee Brown here. Okay. Probably notice and interfere. She's probably noticed, we probably notice and interfere, I should just talk. Any other motion? Any motion? Second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Next item, we just need to introduce, not, but introducing ordinance and title of park use ordinance. It's, it repeat, used to control crowds, whatever, any of our parks. Nelson's been working on it. It's finished, I'll introduce it, I need some more time to introduce it up.
I saw a move, and we introduced the artist entitled Park Use Ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, which we discussed at our workshop, was consider the quote of the Seinbaum Preparation by the Genius Beauty Shop located one on six North Main Street. I got the final quote on the today, twelve thousand dollars, I think, I'm pretty fair. We chose to go down there and do that because of that poor, uh, that old lady just fall and got hurt. It's, it's really bad down there, so because of the traffic and the people we're talking about, we decided we better follow and sit that, so I need a motion from y'all to do that. Motion. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Those many. Next item, is please chief recommendation to hire Hunter Bull as a patrol officer. And then the, the agenda to add, what's his name, Julian Delrinzo, Julian Delrinzo, as an officer. I mean, I need a motion to, to approve those recommendations by the chief. Motion, second chief's recommendation. Second.
Mayor, I'll try to make sure we get their pace yield properly. Mr. Bull, I'd like to hire him at thirteen dollars an hour. And Officer Delrinzo would be hired back fourteen dollars an hour due to the fact that he's already from surviving. We have, with the council, council provision.
We have, we have the pace yield tar, we go back somewhere, it's gonna be close.
And we have a first and second discussion. All in favor? Next item, consider the payment of the page twenty eighty three deals, over two hundred sixty nine pound, seven hundred twenty two dollars. We discussed that in the work session and the reason it's so big, we got a huge insurance payment, one, one time a year payment that's a hundred and
One oh two.
One hundred two thousand dollars. That was a huge part, one, so see, I just need a motion to, I think.
I make a motion, thank you.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Do you have any announcements?
I have one there.
Okay, I have one, good. Go ahead, ladies first.
Okay, the Linnan Taylor Foundation, we support our Northwestern high school to go to higher education. So therefore, we have a fundraiser that will be on Thursday at our Spring Theater on Main Street. And I want to thank some of my stellar sponsors in here that helped me with our foundation. I'm looking at you, thank you very much, thank you very much. We're showing the Woman King and I have some tickets today for pre-seeding. Or you can pay at the, at the ticket booth for seven dollars. And all our proceeds go to our very own Northwestern high school graduates. And this year, we did three students and our first year, we had a total of five students. So we are helping eight students right now in college. And I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you very much.
I just, people were talking about the positive things a while ago, this past Saturday, they were two big events. We had the jamboree going on, which we had several hundred people. They had the bingo here. There was several hundred people in this town over the weekend and a lot of them were from outside. So we got some good things going up. I know the jamboree, well, we normally go play bingo because it is fun, but I'm down there. We had young children singing this song. We had young children singing this song. And I mean, it was fantastic. They brought grandma, granddad, they brought, and it was great. So there's good things going on with y'all. I know every time we turn on the news or something bad, and, well, this is not good sometimes, but there's good things.
Appreciate that. On top of that, I want to really, you know, what Amy said, I was, I was, I've been around here, I watch the clock. Y'all be around here all the time. That's the best time I've ever seen y'all. In all the work, the volunteers and everybody out there paying. And I know that you've got some more to finish, you're able to donate, myself, I want to donate to you there. But I think that we've got the, the, the jam over there, I'm kind of getting jam, so just keep going.
It's a beautiful pavilion, you know, I want to make sure it goes to good use. It looks, it looks really great since volunteers put all that work into it. And rolling on mic as well, there's a lot of really good things going on Main Street. I mean, Spring Hill's really got it going on right now. There's new businesses opening up, we're gonna have three within the next few months. And, and they're not, no-name businesses are nice, people are doing really big things here. So I think we can have some pride in ourselves too. That was a great community event to get everybody out and together. It just seemed good music, good people, good time. I'm proud of Spring Hill.
All right, if, uh, anybody else? Nothing else, where's your?